Okay, good afternoon, everyone. And sorry for the slight delay. We were next door, meeting, and then had to take a quick break. So, sorry about that. So, thanks for being here and for your continued interest in the university. First thing I'd like to do is take the roll, please. Mrs. Ammerman.
Trustees Alexander.
Here.
Allen. Arnell. Broadhurst.
Here.
Clemmons. Corbett. Kotner.
Here.
Dambly.
Here.
Devini.
Here.
Eccle.
President.
Erickson. Fraser.
Here.
Gregg.
Here.
Hayes.
Here.
Hens. Huber.
Here.
Corey.
Here.
Lubert. Lubrano.
Reddy.
Maser.
Here.
McCumbey.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Peets.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Silvis.
Here.
Strumpf. Sui.
Yep.
Serma.
Yep.
Telferro.
Here.
Tamalis.
Here.
Huck. Wise. And Wolf.
Great. Okay, I'd like to actually start with some remarks that I think will set the stage for both today's meeting as well as tomorrow. We are Penn State. Four words synonymous with heritage, achievement, leadership, and responsibility. Four words we live by. Four words that are special and carry special meaning for each of us. We know that Penn State is a special place. It's a place where students with ambition, ability, and potential have their lives transformed. Where researchers and faculty find solutions to the world's most vexing challenges. Where staff take great pride in their work and university. Where student athletes excel on the playing field and in the classroom. And where alumni passion and commitment are unsurpassed. We are Penn State. We are all about serving our 96,000 students throughout the Commonwealth and beyond. Focusing on our land-grant mission so that every one of our students can reach his or her full potential through their Penn State experience and degree. We are world-class faculty and students committed to our studies. In fact, in just the past few weeks, we were ranked within the top 50 universities worldwide for academic achievement. We are well-rounded individuals, making Penn State students and alumni so highly desirable in today's competitive marketplace. We are Penn State. As we focus on the future, we cannot underestimate or minimize the broad and immense impact recent events have had on our community. And of course, on the victims who have suffered much longer. We are Penn State. And as we move forward, accepting the consequences of failure, remedying any wrongs, but not losing sight of the outstanding heritage we've built for nearly 160 years. We've been through challenging times, and we move forward with confidence renewed in who we are and on who we can become. We're entering a new era of high standards of corporate governance, where the universities and this Board of Trustees deliberations and actions are open and transparent. Except for limited sensitive, legal, or individual personnel matters, the board meetings will be open and available to all. A prime example of this was our recent Board of Trustees call on Sunday, August 12th, which was open to the public. A more obvious signal is our public meetings today and tomorrow. We will communicate more directly, frequently, and openly. We will have expanded our online presence with a website called Progress, dedicated to the progress we're making, as well as a site that provides information about the Board of Trustees and its actions, including meeting agendas, minutes, and other material. We are taking action to strengthen our university. We recently announced a new chief counsel, Steve Dunham, who joins us from Johns Hopkins. Steve has already brought a fresh, new, and needed perspective. At our meetings today and tomorrow, the Board is considering several more key matters. Importantly, we will be discussing searches, in due course, for a new president and a new provost, in addition to our current search for a leader of compliance across the university. These are all highly important leadership positions. We will deliberate about the right timing and sequencing for these critical searches while we maintain complete confidence in an endorsement of our current leadership. It's my hope that these discussions will, in short order, lead to actions resulting in the framing of the search objectives, naming of committee members, and setting achievable timelines. We will keep everyone informed as we progress. For better oversight and effectiveness, we'll also be establishing more central control over both the human resources and the compliance functions throughout the university. These are important steps to enhance the university's infrastructure and modernize key administrative functions, while recognizing that certain aspects of these functions must be performed at the level where the activity occurs. The Board believes we cannot stand still as an organization and accept the status quo, but must focus on best practices from both operational and skills points of view. We will continue to review and discuss with university management how we can enhance both effectiveness and efficiencies. To broaden and expand our own thinking and perspectives, the Board is also discussing the formation of the Blue and White Distinguished Advisory Group with broad global experience. The advisory group would be a wise and valuable adjunct to the skills and capabilities of our management team and our Board. The primary objective of the group will be to provide their unique perspective on our future strategy to maintain our world-class academic stature and as a preload to the transition to new presidential leadership. Earlier, I spoke about transparency as a first step in improving corporate governance. In the coming months, I will be engaging the Board in further discussions on other aspects of good corporate governance. I anticipate these discussions will focus on such issues as aligning the Board with its key constituents, current trends in thinking, as well as overall best practices. We will strive for flawless execution in addressing these issues, whether in the classroom, the research lab, the hospital room, or on the athletic field. These coming months will, for sure, bring more than chill winds and blowing snow. They'll bring stiff challenges, testing us all, testing whether or not, in fact, we are Penn State. Understand clearly, these months ahead may be less shocking, but they may well be more difficult as the legal ramifications of this tragedy continue to play out. We must be prepared to address these issues head-on. To do so, we must execute the changes necessary and the changes we pledged and be true to our values. We have begun to do so. Earlier this month, I reported that Judge Free's interim recommendations, which he presented to us early this year, have either been implemented or are substantially complete. Now, this weekend, and in the immediate weeks ahead, the Board will discuss and consider the administration's plan to review and implement, as appropriate, the final recommendations of Judge Free's July report. We are focused on the recommendations in Section 10. We must move forward with urgency. Additionally, we, as a Board, must lead with the guidance of Senator George Mitchell in effectuating the NCAA Athletic Integrity Agreement, which focuses on compliance and cultural issues. We've met with the Senator and pledged our full cooperation. The leaders of our athletic department, including the head coaches, are fully on board with this compliance effort. Clearly, these are issues we wished we would have never faced. If only, two wishful words. But reality is often cruel and harsh, and responsibility is often difficult to accept, but we must do so. There are some with differing opinions, some who say, "Fight back." While I'm respectful of those individuals, let me be clear: We must not and will not waver in accepting responsibility and reality. We'll take decisive actions to right wrongs, change and improve processes and operations, and demonstrate values-based leadership in all we do. And we'll continue to make Penn State the institution we are all so very proud of. So, we must be as flawless as humanly possible in executing these critical actions. In so doing, we will put Penn State on a clear path to continue to realize our land-grant educational mission and all that it embodies. That is what we believe in; that is what we were here for. There is no doubt we can do it. We can reconnect through our shared values, our passion for our university, and our love for its community. We are a great university that can get even better. We will be the best public university. Our values of decency, hard work, and service develop students into self-made people who go on to make important contributions to America and to the world. We embrace the future. We are, after all, Penn State. So, with that, what I'd like to do is get into the items that we have to discuss today. I will remind you that this is an information session only and that no motions will be entertained today. What we're going to try to do this afternoon is to explain to everyone how we are looking to implement, first analyze, and then implement, both the free recommendations as well as the coming principles that are part of the Athletic Integrity Agreement. What we're trying to do is create a framework where we can include both of those topics. And what we thought would be important today, in addition to some committee work, would be to first explain to you how are we going to create this umbrella of both analyzing and oversight? And we also thought it would be important for you to understand the role of the accounting firm who's going to be helping us kind of keep track of where we are with each of these topics. We also thought that it would be helpful for everyone to hear more about the Athletic Integrity Agreement so that you understand what it is that we're going to get signed up for. And so, we will have Steve Dunham, the new chief counsel, explaining the key parts, even though it has not yet been executed, the key parts of that agreement. So, what I first want to do is introduce Keith Maser, the vice chair of the Board, and have him talk a little bit about this oversight and how we're going to run, really, both the free group recommendations as well as the Athletic Integrity Agreement. Keith.
Thank you, Karen. I basically want to explain to you this diagram that we're looking at on the Board. It is the framework for the team that will be responsible for implementing the recommendations from the free report. And at the top of the list, you see the Board of Trustees Response Team, which Karen has asked me to lead. And that, actually, the whole program, but that will include the chairs of our committees. And if the -- they will be responsible for being on that committee or delegating someone within their committee to be on there. So, if, for instance, actually, our chairman of Communications in outreach committee has asked his vice chair to serve on that. But so, that's a framework, or that, the Board of Trustees will be assembled. And they will have both analytical oversight and implementation responsibilities. So, the recommendations and other best practices for our governance, for instance, will be implemented within the Board itself. The oversight responsibilities will be for the Administration Response Team, which includes Tom Poole, David Gray, and Steve Dunham. And the Board will provide oversight to the Administration, and they will be implementing the majority of the recommendations that don't pertain to the Board. Now, we also have an advisory council that will basically maintain open communication, seeking input and feedback, providing wider transparency to the university community. And members will be invited by President Erickson and Chairwoman Peets. The external project management team, which David Gray will follow up behind me and explain further the status of that, will be basically a project management team and assist with the implementation, and he'll go into details of that further. Now, what has been done, each of you have a matrix.
They will.
Oh, they will, okay. So, there's a matrix being handed out. And this matrix has in it the, basically, all the recommendations that were included in the free report. And there's a -- they're categorized in with which -- who the functional leaders are, who the executive or Board of Trustee leaders would be within those recommendations, the Board Committee that would be responsible for them. And then, as you know, we've got an interim report, and some of these recommendations have already been implemented. And so, we have a status report, a status indicator, basically, green, yellow, and red. And then, we have a completion date. So, we will begin to populate this matrix and fill it in. And this is the structure on how we're going to proceed with that. So, are there any questions on -- yes, Stephanie?
With regard to the advisory council, I see there's a representative from Hershey Medical Center.
Yes.
I'm just curious why we selected just the medical center and didn't include other graduate programs.
I'm not sure that advisory council is set in stone, Stephanie. I mean, that there's Rod and Karen will huddle up to, you know, to get the right persons there, but, you know, that's a good comment.
Yeah.
So, I'm -- that's basically just a framework of that we will have an advisory council.
Okay.
So, yes, your point is made. We'll get the right people on it.
Thank you.
Yes, John?
Excuse me, Keith. Just a clarification, so I can understand it the least.
Yep.
I think I understand the column headings, work title, functional, et cetera. The Board Committees that are listed, many different committees, depending on the recommendation, would be the committee that would have predominant oversight responsibilities for the university functional area that's doing the implementation. Is that a way to think about it?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's what I tried to explain earlier.
Okay.
There are some things on here that actually has implementation work for the Board to do.
Yeah.
But the things that pertain to the university are exactly right. Those are overs -- those would be the committee that would be involved with the oversight function of that particular recommendation.
And then, just one other very fine point, just to make sure I have it right again, is that the audit committee would be, of course, overseeing the -- some directly recommendations, but also the normal audit and risk activities. Those audit activities may well go across a wide range of areas, not just those that you've assigned to the audit committee. So, do I have both of those footnotes correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
And I think I tried to make point on governance. There's other governance best practices that we will be looking at other than what's here. Yes, Joel?
Keith, a suggestion. The free commission had no particular experience with institutions of higher education. And we now, as the Board and with these committees, are going to get into a lot of specific oversight. And I think it would be why, and it's going to be a lot of work, and I think it might be wise considering employing consultants from AGB, Association of Governing Boards, with expertise in each of the five areas, to help each of the committees with a focus and expertise in higher education. So, we have guidance in which of these matters to accept, how to accept them, what's appropriate for a university.
That's a good point, Joel.
Yeah, I think that's a great point, Joel. And since we have had contact with them about best practices, we kind of know exactly how to go about it. So, thanks.
Any other questions? Questions are related to the Board. So, oh, yes, Keith?
Yes, the one question that comes to my mind is the matrix. I've looked it over, and obviously, we will have work to do in making certain that it fits different committees. We've also referred to an audit group that will provide oversight for that. Would we anticipate that there might be some changes to the matrices as questions come from the committees and also from the oversight?
Absolutely. I mean, that's a great question, but that's part of what we're doing. And this is -- this was just to lay it out, and this needs to be -- this is a work in progress, and that we will utilize the people in this group to get things aligned properly. David?
Thank you, Vice Chair Maser. I want to update you on the status of our engagement of a project manager for services related to the response to the free report. We issued a request for proposals document on July 26th, soliciting firms to provide project manager services for tracking and implementing recommendations from the free report. As we stated in the RFP, the university wishes to hire a firm to be a project manager who can assist Penn State to create a systematic response and follow-up plan to the free report recommendations. Among the services to be provided by the selected firm would be maintenance of a comprehensive list of the recommendations, definition of specific tasks to fulfill the recommendations, tracking assignments of responsibilities to individuals within the administration, monitoring of work effort, assessing progress toward the established outcomes and objectives, and reporting on status and progress to university administration and to the Board of Trustees on a regular basis. We solicited proposals from seven top-tier accounting and management consulting firms, and responses were requested by August 15th, a very short turnaround time indeed for services of this comprehensive nature. In the weeks since the RFP was issued, the university has determined that it will negotiate an expansion of scope in the services with the selected firm to include project management services relative to the Athletic Integrity Agreement that is included under the NCAA consent decree. The services will be complementary and substantially similar to those needed to respond and support the free response effort. In addition, we may choose to expand the scope of services to include subject matter expertise in areas for which the selected firm has knowledge or competencies that may prove helpful to our overall response effort. The current status of the firm's selection process is that we entered into dialogue with firms this past week, reviewed all of our proposals with those firms, completed interviews as of yesterday afternoon, and we expect to enter into negotiations with a selected firm early next week and be able to complete a service contract within a matter of days thereafter. The chosen firm should be in a position to begin the engagement with Penn State almost immediately after they have been selected. They have both committed to that, so I think we're in very good position. I'd be happy to field any questions from the Board. Thank you.
Okay, so just a couple of remarks. First, many thanks to David Gray, Tom Poole, and Steve Dunham for shaping this to how you did. I think the spreadsheet is a really great way to have all 119 recommendations in one place. And then, I would emphasize that it will change based on the accounting firm. Once they're chosen, they tend to have a different format of tracking this kind of thing, so it'll probably get morphed and, you know, look a little different the next time you see it. And I want to emphasize kind of the pecking order of how this will work. Above this will be the accounting firm, who will just be kind of ticking and tying of the 119 things. What did you decide to do? What did you decide not to do? What are the deadlines? What are the dates? That kind of thing. That's their role. They do not do the work, all right? They just kind of make sure everybody's doing the work they need to. This is the university's project, all right? So, the university owns this, and the Board will have oversight. So, I just wanted to be clear about whose responsibility it is to do what. It's clearly in the hands of the university under President Erickson with the three people I mentioned. That's very important. Okay. Yes, Anthony, sorry.
At what point might we hear back as to whether AGB agrees with all 119 recommendations or whether they think that some of them are inappropriate?
Yeah, I think what we should do, we should get in touch with Mr. Leggins, the head of the AGB, ask him how we might interface. You may remember that we brought the AGB in early on in the crisis. They actually gave us former president of the University of Virginia. It was before you were involved, Anthony, but he came to opine on some of the committee changes we were making. And so, whether it's he or, you know, we get someone else, it's Richard Leggins, isn't it? What's his last name?
Rick Leggins.
Rick Leggins, I say, Leggins. I think a call to him to see what can they do for us is probably the first step, and then ask how they could interface.
Who's going to take ownership of that call? So, I know someone's doing it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think Keith as the chair of the effort makes sense, right? He knows Keith. He's already met Keith, and we went to their conference and had a good dialogue with him. Other questions? Yes, Steph?
This is really more sort of a general question, but just looking through and looking at the different people that are responsible for various things, the ownership. You know, we see a lot of names repeated, and just, this might even be more for Rod or for someone else, but just sort of the atmosphere around here of how is everyone sort of taking this, and is everyone ready to buckle down and make these changes? Because obviously, it's going to be a lot of hard work on everyone's part.
Yes.
So, just curious, the vibe of everybody to move forward with this.
Yes, that is a concern because everybody's already working 80-hour work weeks, and this is, in many ways, another job. And we are talking, and I had a conversation yesterday with Rod, about possibly getting some dedicated resources in each of particularly the big streams, like compliance and human resources, that perhaps somebody gets appointed full-time to just work on this. But I would also ask the folks working on it to comment on, you know, kind of the spirit and tenor of the work product, if you will, or the work process.
I would just say that there's absolute determination to see this through to a full and effective conclusion. I think everybody is mobilized for that effort, and we understand we're taking a lot on, but we also recognize the importance and the urgency that's attached to it. So, you'll see a first-rate effort.
Yeah, Karen, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Paul.
Just from a process standpoint, instead of sending the entire spreadsheet to the AGB group and say, "Do you agree or don't agree?", shouldn't we, as committee chairs and subchairs, look at this and say, "These are the ones we have in question. Send these 10 or these five," or whatever?
I mean, my take on it would be you want to engage them and then engage you. Yeah. Yeah. Go ahead.
I mean, they're one place to ask questions. There's other areas, too, we could get clarification, whether it makes sense.
That's what I was suggesting, that maybe we have a consultant with expertise in each committee, which the type of -- if you may, or with the committee.
We seem to be having a mechanical malfunction here. Are they working on this side?
Oh, yeah, it is, yeah. Thanks.
There we go.
I just wanted to say, I think it's important that we be thoughtful on our approach, and I would agree with Joel's comment about maybe having ABG or somebody looking at it. But I think we need to digest it. We haven't had a chance to look at all of it. I think we need to give David and his staff an opportunity to do so. And I think Paul's suggesting of not just sending everything. What do you think? I mean, there's some no, you know, there's some no-issue ones here. There's some real common sense ones that I don't think we need to ask anybody if it's the right or the wrong thing to do.
Yeah.
It's the right thing to do.
Yeah.
And I think when there are things on the margins that need to be looked at, then we should seek outside advice. But I think measured, thoughtful comes to mind to me, and not to jump to any -- But I think measured, thoughtful comes to mind to me and not to jump to any rash conclusions.
Yeah, it's also important because I think there's a perception that because of this consent decree, we have to accept all of these recommendations. We've had a conversation with the NCAA this past week and they are very open to those that for good reason we chose, we choose not to accept. They want to have a dialogue about it, but they're very open to the fact that that may be the case. So that's off the table, I think, as well. Okay, all right. Okay, so now what we thought is that it's very important for folks to begin to understand, again, in the same umbrella, so you're going to have the Free Report recommendations and everything we just talked about. And then to be added to that will be the AIA, the Athletic Integrity Agreement. So Steve Dunham, our new chief counsel, who's just joined us, is going to give everyone an understanding of what are, not the agreement itself, but what are the key issues within the agreement that we will then, within athletics, have to execute.
Okay, good afternoon. You all will remember that under the consent decree, there are essentially two sections. There are what are referred to as punitive sanctions and then there what are referred to as corrective sanctions. And on the corrective sanctions part, it anticipates a document called an Athletic Integrity Agreement, which has a monitor and sets forth various standards of good practices and policies going forward over the next five years. We've been in discussions with the NCAA and would expect to complete that agreement shortly. Its main terms are already set in the consent decree, so it's appropriate for me to sort of briefly review them with you. They're already determined. They are intended and designed to move us forward and to improve our practices and policies. I think it's important to keep that in mind. These are not punitive measures, these are measures for change or reform or improvements, however you might want to characterize them. There are five or six elements, pretty easily stated. One is to hire what is referred to as an Athletic Integrity Officer. We have a compliance officer currently, very good one, very active within the athletic department. This is denominated an integrity officer with a broader set of charges to oversee the sort of more general policies from the NCAA and the Big Ten, which currently exist. These aren't made up for us, they're currently policies that focus on ethics and institutional control and integrity and civility. Many of them are policies that we as an institution obviously completely embrace. And this new Athletic Integrity Officer will have supervisory responsibility for developing policies and practices and other mechanisms to reinforce those values and principles as we go forward. A person will report outside of the athletic department, but the focus of the agreement is on the athletic department. Secondly, there's an Athletic Integrity Council. This is a group of faculty administrators and the two people I mentioned, the new Athletic Integrity Officer and the existing Athletic Compliance Officer. And they will sit on this council and they'll provide sort of oversight to the Athletic Integrity Officer and the work he does. Both of those, both the Athletic Integrity Officer and the Athletic Integrity Council, are intended to have direct and appropriate and regular access to the Board of Trustees. It's an important part of the document and an agreement, and I think it's consistent with this board's discussion about governance and responsibility. And I think it plays in directly into that and it will be in the agreement. Next, there's a series of internal team-by-team accountability measures, which is essentially that each team will have a person of our city team, whose job is compliance and integrity and all these sets of values. To a large extent, this may already exist informally, but it sort of formalizes a structure of people whose, part of whose job is to focus on compliance and integrity issues. And this, they will kind of report up to the athletic director on an annual basis as to how their team is doing on these various respects. And it will be a way to get the various compliance aspects of the document spread throughout the athletic department. Next, there's a code of conduct. This is a code of conduct that will apply to people associated with the athletic department, student athletes, employees, coaches, and trustees, and the president. It will combine both employees and students in its scope. And it's intended to be a set of sort of best practices for appropriate conduct in relation to athletics and to establish standards of institutional accountability. There's also a requirement for policies and procedures. By the way, the document will specify some specifics on what the code of conduct is intended to cover so that it will apply and how it's to be implemented. There's also a provision about policies and procedures to be developed, again, to further the various goals and purposes that I've mentioned. There's a training and education requirement with respect to the various, both requirements of the AIA and also compliance more generally and the values more generally. And then finally, there's a disclosure program that will ensure that if people see problems, there's a easy, well-known, well-communicated way to raise them. The university, of course, already has some such programs and we're allowed flexibility in this agreement to not recreate the wheel and to coordinate appropriate disclosure documents under the agreement with existing university procedures. Finally, there's the monitor. Chair Peitz has mentioned Senator Mitchell. Senator Mitchell has begun his work, we've engaged with him, he's talked to some people already on campus. And his role will be to monitor the Athletic Integrity Agreement and a series of other NCAA and Big Ten requirements. I should note, this agreement is not just with the NCAA, but with the Big Ten as well. The consent decree, that was not true, but it is true for this document. And we, the agreement will spell out the working relationship with the monitor, which I think is off to a very positive constructive start as we implement the document. So are there any questions about that?
I have a question. How much are we paying the Athletic Integrity Officer?
Well, we haven't hired anybody, so we don't know. As soon as the agreement is signed, we will prepare a position description and move forward. We have 120 days to hire somebody, so.
How about the case of Senator Mitchell? How is he being paid and what's it costing?
We don't know what the total will be. He's being paid, he's associated with a law firm and we're engaging the law firm at their rates on a somewhat discounted basis.
Do we know what those are on a somewhat discounted basis?
We don't have a final agreement with him, so I don't, I can't give you a number, but we are in discussions with them. They didn't want to finalize and didn't think it was appropriate to finalize the monitor agreement until the AIA was finalized.
Stephen, how many universities have at this time an Athletic Integrity Officer, an Athletic Integrity Council, formal team-by-team accountability, a code of conduct as extensive as this will be, and a disclosure program as this will be when it's finally put together? How many other universities have that, all of that in place now?
Yeah, so just two or three quick responses to that. I don't know, I would be surprised if there are others that have that whole array. There are other universities that do have parts of that. There are universities where a compliance officer in the athletic department reports outside the athletic department. There are universities with very well-developed codes of conduct. There are universities with policies and practices. We have policies and practices. This is, you know, this will be an additional focus on how effective they are. There are universities with disclosure obligations, we have disclosure obligations. So I do, I don't know how complete it is. Clearly, some of this is new. The Athletic Integrity Officer, per se, is probably completely new. So the other provisions, I would guess one finds aspects of it in other places. This brings it together in a focused, organized way. That position is a newly described position. It does resonate with, if I can use that word, with corporate America that has ethics officers and integrity officers beyond compliance that deal with issues. And this, it has some similarities to that sort of structure.
I'm not saying that it shouldn't exist, I'm just saying if it exists for Penn State, why doesn't the NCAA require it for all member institutions?
Yeah.
I have a question for you, Steve. How often, if you know, does the NCAA come in and do certifications of athletic programs?
Just in general?
Yes.
I don't know, they come, they investigate individual issues? I don't know if you're talking about a regular sort of trip? I don't know if Dave Joyner's here, but I don't know the answer.
Yeah, regular.
The provost may be able to answer that.
We are accredited by the NCAA on a 10-year period.
And the last one was done when? Might it have been later than that? Is it possible? Okay.
Excuse me, one question, Steve. The role of the monitor, the role of the monitor is to oversee the implementation of the Athletic Integrity Agreement.
That's the core of it.
And is, in your conversations with the senator, do you get the sense that it will be an ongoing review as to the quality of Penn State's implementation of the agreement? Or do you get a sense that he will be, or he sees his role as hovering and reporting back to the NCAA and we won't, we won't hear a report until the end? Or we won't hear a report until we hear something from the NCAA? Or will he be, since he will be here, taking proactive steps and identifying strengths and weaknesses of the implementation process?
The very specific issue of reporting is it's built into the agreement that he will be reporting to us on the same timetable that he's reporting to the NCAA, so we will have that. But more than the regular reporting, which we will be part of, he will be here, he and his team will be here talking to us. And the NCAA is not part of that process, so we will have regular, ongoing communications with the monitor. And I think it's fair to say that the monitor and those of us who've had an opportunity to talk to him are in sync, that this is a positive constructive goal to make us better, to help through the various issues, to comply, no question, to comply with the requirements, that's part of it, and to monitor those requirements, but to work together to achieve the broader purposes and goals of the document.
Steve, just have one final quick question. The team-by-team monitor, would that be a position that's filled by someone that's currently on the staff or?
Yeah, yes, it's not a new position. And it's not, monitored isn't quite the right word, but it's somebody in there who is, has responsibility specifically for compliance more broadly.
Steve, I don't mean to bog you down in this, you may not have the answer, but generally speaking, as part of this cultural change that they're requiring of us, does that include removing any reference to Joe Paterno in football or Joe Paterno in athletics that you know of?
Hasn't been part of any discussion.
Thank you.
Steve, are they monitoring this along the lines of NCAA violations? Is that the purpose of this? Because we've never had any NCAA violations.
Yeah, no, that's actually not the purpose. The purpose is a broader set of issues. So it's to monitor compliance with the AIA, as Trustee Tamala said, which does have a series of new requirements with some timetables and some specifics. So it's to monitor that. It's also to monitor the broader principles that the NCAA and Big Ten have in their existing documents, integrity, ethics, institutional control, respect, civility. It's to monitor those. And then, as been mentioned, there's also a cultural change, cultural health aspect of it, which the monitor also has responsibilities to track and look at.
Thank you, Steve. And again, having met with Senator Mitchell also this past week, his view is that he will have failed if we fail. And so it is a very positive and proactive, Steve didn't go that far, but that's what he said in the meeting that I had with him. So I think he's going to be quite, you know, positive. We obviously have to comply, but he's not going to be looking to do a gotcha, which is not a good mode to be in. The other thing, I mean, it's obviously a glass half-full and it kind of relates to what Joel said, but we will, I think, be the model for the NCAA. And it wouldn't surprise me if this shows up in other places as well. But there's no question that we will be the model. Yes?
When I asked the question about the certification, the answer's 2008. And in that, if you go back, you'll have a glowing report from the auditor who made a public statement, holding us up as the model.
Good. That's good. That's good. The other thing I would say is that the code of conduct that will inevitably come out of this, I know that everyone who's been involved in athletics, myself included, at Penn State, believes we had a code of conduct. We didn't have a written code of conduct, we didn't have a consistent code of conduct. This is going to be a positive as well, that everyone will be clear about what are the expectations for athletes at Penn State. Okay, so now, what we're going to do, and this gets a little tricky, yes?
Going off to the committee meetings, I wonder if you could indulge me for a few minutes. I won't be able to be here tomorrow. As many of you know, my mother passed away on Sunday.
Yes.
And by the way, thanks for the condolences and the letters. You've all been very thoughtful and appreciate that very much. But my brothers and I will be burying her tomorrow in Philadelphia. I did want to make a few remarks. So please indulge me. Joey Sandusky is convicted as a sick and monstrous man. Under the guise of helping children, he victimized them. Those victims continue to suffer to this day. Some were victimized on our campus and we take as much responsibility for that as is humanly possible. By shining the light on what happened and becoming a leader against child sexual abuse, we hope to save tens of thousands of potential future victims nationwide from a similar fate as well as help those who have suffered here. Education and awareness is the key to reducing sexual abuse, which is a plague upon this nation. Education is what we're all about. One in four girls and one in six boys are sexually abused. Sexual abuse is not a rarity. It's all too common in this society and we've learned that it's not only happened at Penn State, but on other colleges and universities. If there's any good that's come from this tragedy, it's that it's shown the spotlight on this epidemic of child abuse and the challenges to stop it. Penn State is a great university. It was a great university prior to November and it is today. It was a great university prior to the Free Report and it is today. Penn State was a great university before the NCAA's unfair sanctions were forced upon it and it is today. We have had high admission standards. We're one of the top universities not only in the United States and in the world, and this has been lost in some of this. Penn State leads the way in many fields. The Penn State faculty, staff, students, alumni, and the entire Penn State community contribute significantly to Pennsylvania, the United States, and the global society. Once we became aware of this tragedy, and we've also learned that villains of this type are great manipulators and cover-up artists, we did everything a good institution should do to move forward and we took action to get the facts out. We hired an independent investigator to explore and provide his expert opinions and findings. However, the Free Report, despite what the NCAA Consent Decree says, is still being reviewed, as we heard here today, and has not been fully accepted. We committed to a full disclosure. We committed to move forward in a healthy way, correcting what was wrong and providing information to law enforcement officials so that those accused would have their day in court. Penn State has had a clean and enviable track record, one of only three universities in the entire country to never have had a major sanction by the NCAA. Penn State has maintained one of the highest graduation rates among football athletes compared to peer institutions. This didn't just occur in one year. It didn't just occur in one decade, it's occurred decade after decade. One should then ask, why is it that the NCAA wants to tear down this model? Why is the NCAA, which includes among its members universities and colleges who graduate 20% of their basketball players and 50% 20% of their basketball players and 50% of their football players, sanctioning Penn State for allowing athletes to trump, athletics to trump epidemics, when it's Penn State which graduates 88% of its football players? Not one year or two, but year after year, decade after decade. These sanctions, I believe, are a blight on the NCAA and the institutions that make it up. My nine-year-old son said to me, "Dad, I helped cheer Penn State onto victory last year, and now those wins have been erased. I did what you always told me to do. Dad, I gave it my all, and my cheering and enthusiasm helped support the student athletes. I felt good when we won the games. It does not seem fair to me that they took away those wins, not only from Penn State, but away from the athletes, from the fans, and from me." Hundreds of thousands of Penn State families have similarly suffered. How does this help the concept of higher education, of fairness and dignity, of inspiration? What is even based on, what does it even mean? It's a fiction. The games were won based on hard work by thousands unrelated to Sandusky and his crimes. It's one more fiction that the NCAA has used to simply inflict hurt on the Nittany Nation with no benefit to anyone. It is designed to damage innocent athletes, innocent students who played on the field, and millions who attended the games. It's a petulant child gone wild. The NCAA, in my view, has lost its moral compass. In the cold light of day, we must realize we have to stand up against this, not stand down. There's also the issue of the vultures, coaches from other schools stalking our football players outside the football building after the NCAA said it was legal to steal away our players, even though the NCAA normally considers such recruiting illegal. The NCAA essentially said stealing is legal against Penn State. If we must play the schools that did that, let the crowds overwhelm them with our noise and good sportsmanship, and the Nittany Lions show them no mercy on the field. Should we even be part of the Big Ten if our own conference schools help tear us down? I thought they were here to help us, not hurt us. In my view, this does not fit with the ideals of fair play that we teach our students. In the cold light of day, we must realize we have to stand up against this, not stand down. The NCAA are people who tell Penn State that we put athletics before academics. The reverse is true. Perhaps these university presidents were looking in the mirror when they conjured up that statement. For institutions of higher learning to disregard the facts and reach false conclusions betrays the very core principles for which institutions of higher learning stand and have stood for centuries. Shame on them all. I'm tired of being told we need to put practicality above principle. In the cold light of day, we must realize we have to stand up against this, not stand down. Our lawyers have used the term, quote, "crammed down," where Emmerit, the man who, quote, "negotiated," unquote, with our President Rod Erickson, essentially said, "You sign this agreement, or you have the death penalty. You'll play no football for four years." Also, Mr. President, you're not allowed to tell the Board of Trustees that you're going to do this, because if you tell them and it leaks out, we'll settle for nothing less than four years of winds of October and November blowing through your empty Beaver Stadium. By the way, Dr. Erickson, we do not care if by not telling the Board of Trustees, you may be violating the charter of the university. And we do not care, Mr. President, that by not telling the Board of Trustees and getting their approval, you will be violating one of the major recommendations of the Free Report itself and the very principles we are telling you to abide by. We are the NCAA, Mr. President, and we are a dictatorship. We do what we please, and you as an NCAA member must accept it. So we have power over your institution now and forever. Interestingly, some in the NCAA said it did not happen that way. They say no death penalty was threatened, but review of the quotes from Emmerit and Ray's support that it occurred, just as President Erickson said it did. I'll pass out a review of those quotes that demonstrates these comments. But even there, a straight answer from the NCAA seems impossible to secure. We see parsed words and a clear attempt to paint Dr. Erickson as a liar. This, too, is not acceptable. In the cold light of day, I believe we have to stand up against this, not stand down. Are these the tactics and this lack of clarity and candor what the NCAA stands for? Threats, coercion, lying, stealing, and intimidation are not what we teach our students as appropriate business tactics for profits and nonprofit institute organizations. I would hope such answers on a test would get a failing grade for ethics in this Middle College of Business and in a law class at the Dickinson School of Law. In addition, the very processes of the NCAA were not followed by the NCAA, and the NCAA seems hell-bent on turning a deaf ear to concerns by anyone to review its own despicable actions. In the cold light of day, I believe we have to stand up against this, not stand down. This all contrasts very sharply with the aggressive actions Penn State took quickly and with transparency and candor as the difficult news around the Sandusky crimes came to light. I personally believe the NCAA is no longer worthy to be considered a representative of higher education. Furthermore, this powerful NCAA, an association of university presidents, apparently free of control by the faculty of these colleges and universities and the university boards, is now damaging the mission and reputation of higher education in America. The NCAA needs the fresh air of reform to blow through it. I say to the faculties and the boards of American higher education, "Take back your institutions." I applaud the recent action of our own faculty senate in this regard. Finally, if any of the sanctions against Penn State are to stand, they need to fit within the rules and standards of the NCAA, need to fit within the due process of the NCAA procedures and its charter and bylaws that its member institutions have agreed upon, and needs to meet the fair, high standards that higher education stands for in a system of fairness and within the American system of the rule of law and justice. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Joel. Is there any, any discussion? Yes, Keith Echol.
Chair Peets, I heard Trustee Myers' comments about standing up. And I believe the best way that this Board of Trustees can stand up is to provide the education and programs prescribed by our land-grant institution requirements. It's time for this board and this university to stop looking back and start looking ahead. I in no way defend the decisions of the NCAA, but I embrace our mission and our responsibility to serve our 95,000 students, our research, our extension, and our faculty. I believe that many times, we live with unfairness. I happen to be a farmer. Last year, we suffered flood. Our crops were destroyed. It did not stop me from moving forward. It is extremely unfortunate that we find ourselves in these circumstances. But at the same time, we are Penn State, and as our chair said, we are going to move forward. We're going to meet our mission. We are absolutely going to be the university that the nation looks up to again. Unfortunate circumstances have caused a situation where that is not the case today, no matter how much we wish it were not the case. So Chair Peets, I urge my colleagues to devote every ounce of their energy toward this university moving forward with its mission, and that is the education of our youth. That is the greatness of Penn State. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you. Anthony.
We've heard time and time again from the membership how important it is for this university to move forward. I don't think there's a member here who wouldn't agree that it's important for us to move forward. But you've heard me say time and time again, I'm going to say again today, that in order for us to move forward and heal, we need to cure what ails us. We need to understand what ails us. This is a family, Penn State. This is not a corporation. This is a group of people hurting very deeply from what's happened. And for us to just blindly say we're moving forward without finding that bridge to the past, we are destined to fail. And I don't think any of us want that to happen.
Thank you. Other comments? Other trustees? Yes, Mark.
Karen, I'm not going to be as eloquent as Keith, but I, for record, want to state very clearly that I support Keith's statements of it is time to move forward. We need to pivot from where we are, and we need to remind ourselves of our purpose, and that is the education of our children and our youth.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Keith.
I read somewhere today during our message that our coach, O'Brien, his brother made a comment that, how he's dealing with the situation, he says he chooses to focus on things he can control and try and not focus on the things he cannot control. And although I, I am as sickened by these NCAA sanctions as anybody, I for one want this board to focus its energy on the comments that Trustee Echol said, and moving forward, we got a lot of work to do. I, I for one do not recommend that we take on this fight. It's behind us, and we need to move forward. And by moving forward, we can defend our past.
Any other comments? Okay, all right. I think what we'll do is get back then to where we were going, which is we have committee assignments. You should know who is on your committee. This will be a joint meeting between the university staff and the board members in each of the categories of your committee assignment. You have a room number that I'd like you to go to. What we'd like to do is have you begin deliberating and go as long as you need to. And then there is dinner, I think, what time? 6 o'clock dinner in Orchid Room. Okay? So thank you very much.
Sorry about your. Oh, thank you. I had to make that statement. I don't know. I just.